Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 28. Roll call.
Manson?
President.
McPherson?
Yes.
Templeton?
Here.
Lane?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
And Chairman?
Here.
Chairman.
I'm here too Lana.
Oh. I missed her name.
I got it.
I had the president but I forgot the I.
Okay, under A and B we're going to be a consent agenda tonight, so it'll just be one vote for the two items. Approval of the planning commission and approval of minutes of the planning commission held last, held in November.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Templeton?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item C, disclosure of conflict of interest, does anybody have anything concerning tonight's business?
Nope.
Disclosure of outside communications regarding commission of business, anybody? Okay. Item four, call the public, members of the public who wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Any presentation is for the information purposes only and no action will be taken. There's a four minute time limit. Seeing none. Item number five, public hearing, this is special use permit for pole sign at the Burger King. We'll hear from staff first.
All right, thank you Chairman. What you have before you is a special use permit for the Burger King at 37071 Commerce Drive. I'm going to briefly go through the staff report, I'm not going to read things verbatim, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. It has been submitted on behalf of the owner, representation for the owner is here tonight. I've included within our staff report the regulations for pole signs. There are currently three signs already existing in DeSoto. Those include the Casey's, McDonald's, and the Phillips 66, so this is not something that's new to DeSoto, but we have not had a pole sign application, I think, since 2014. So it has been a little while since that has occurred. Notification letters were sent out to the adjacent property owners in late December. Also, a notice in the legal record was published for the public hearing, and then also, a sign has been in front of the Burger King since, right after Burger King opened, which was around the 20th of December. At this time, I've not heard any comments at all from anybody in the general public about the potential sign. The reason we're able to consider this is the property is owned C2 Business General, which we do allow with a special use permit. It also must be within the K10 corridor, which this property does comply with that. I've also included the application, and the, within that is the site plan for the location of the potential Burger King sign. It's actually, if you've gone through the drive-through, it's in the, sort of the corner of that area, right when you sort of curve to head back to pay for your order. Intent of this area, I mean, as I'd mentioned, the C2 Business General District, I just put the quick definition for those. It does allow drive-through services, which is permitted by right in the C2 zoning district. So all the things that need to come into play before the planning commission can even approve an SUP have been met. Review of the matters to be considered, as I'd mentioned, there are three signs within the, within this K10 area, so the request is found to be compatible with the nearby uses. As I said, it's within the correct zoning district, just kind of moving on. The extent within the community which this is needed, it's kind of difficult to ascertain how much additional business activity will be generated by the installation of the sign. However, the applicant feels pretty strongly that this is a necessary component to their business development. And also with our comprehensive plan, we place an importance on promoting and encouraging new business, which Burger King is certainly a new business. It's been open a little bit over a month. As far as the, there'd be no impact to services, and there'll be, or impact to roadway network, utilities, things like that. So those are all found positive as far as supporting the SUP request. The environmental impacts, as far as, you know, stormwater, some of the things that we traditionally think of, air pollution, water pollution, will be no impacts in that regard. The one thing that we do have some concern is within this K10 corridor, there is potential that any one of those lots, or every, within the newly platted area could have a pole sign. I don't think that's going to happen, based on just some of the sort of discussions we've had with the developer about potential tenants, all very informal, but not all of them would be fast food restaurants that would be relying on activity, or the visual cues that would be required, or why the pole sign is being requested. So, that's just something to sort of keep in the back of your mind as we discuss this item, that there is that potential. However, it's probably unlikely, but once again, we need to sort of think of all the things that could happen before we make a decision along these lines. As far as the economic impact of the sign itself, I don't know that there's going to be any particularly value to the community. Mike said, might be a fraction more in property tax, or some things like that, but otherwise, there isn't going to be much advantage or disadvantage for having the sign. Don't see that the zoning, or the properties nearby, the light industrial tracks, and the commercial properties in the area will be affected. As I mentioned, there are already three signs in those, those areas. The, so proposed side, this location is within the general requested area for our comp plan as far as business development. It's, like I said, C2, it's, it's in keeping with the overall discussion of the comprehend and the future land use plan within our city of DeSoto. I did also include the technical review of the submittal, as far as things we have to look at, and these things have all been met. The sign is within the K10 overlay district, the sign is not going to be more than 60 feet in height from the base. The surface area is 200 square feet, so a 400 square feet total on both sides. There will only be one sign on the Burger King property, and that's, one of the keys that we also have is the principal use, needs to be on-site, and this is, will be on-site. The sign will be met, will meet our setback requirements for the tract, and the sign will not be using any kind of LEDs, or any kind of bright or flashing lights on display. So, it does meet all our technical requirements. One thing, so, at this time, staff is recommending approval of the application for a term of 20 years. One thing I wanted to point out, that we've had some discussion at the staff level, whether or not these should be in perpetuity, or does the applicant need to renew after a period of time? One thing that we are considering, you might want to think about adding to your motion, is with an automatic renewal annually, after the first 20-year period, to allow, if the governing body or the council at that time would like to at least consider having the applicant reapply, they could, with 90-day notices, allow that to happen. So with that, concludes my staff report, and stand for any questions that you all may have. If you like the applicants here tonight, if you would like to ask them.
Is the owner here? Anybody have any questions for staff or the owner?
The only thing I had was, on part of this application, it said, time for the special use permit, and it said, none. I can't figure out which page I had, saw it on here. Some of the paperwork that was filled out.
Where are you at, John, on this?
I'm trying to figure out, on the special use, the length of time for the special use permit, oh, it said, should this special use permit be valid for a specific period of time, and it's checked, no.
Well, I guess what they're saying is they would like to have it in perpetuity, forever. Well, at least as long as the Burger King is there. And we're, and we're suggesting 20 years with annual renewal.
Patrick?
Yeah, I was just going to add, with a special use permit, we've always taken this, you don't want it in perpetuity, because that's essentially, you're rezoning the property that, that becomes the property right that you could never take away, or purpose. Essentially saying, we're just allowing you to do this for a special use, in this case, the pole sign, now given it's from construction, that's why we talked about doing a yearly automatic renewal. It's probably the case that the city would never be in a position to want to, you know, have that removed, but by having the provision in there, that 90-day notice after the 20-year term, the city could notify the applicant that we want you to reapply, to go through the process that gives us the levers, if that ever becomes incompatible with surrounding uses, the city would have the ability to, you know, address that. Whereas if it was in perpetuity, like I said, it's like rezoning the property that the city could, it'd just be very difficult for the city to get back in.
Audrey, you have any comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. There are three pole signs that we have in the city limits right now.
Correct.
And are those on special use permits?
They are.
Do those have a term on them?
I can't tell you if that, there's a spike, I mean, if you.
Well, so the Casey's one does, it has a 20-year, with no renewal. The other two are on older use permits, and they're not that.
Okay.
The McDonald's one does not have, I'm not sure about that. The Phillips, I can't, I couldn't sort of, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I don't know. Okay. You know, we have taken down a pole sign before. You know, it does, not that Burger King would ever leave DeSoto, but businesses do leave from time to time, and we've had that happen here in town. So, I certainly think if you're going to approve this use, it should be for a certain term, because that's going to at least prompt you to be able to do something with it, instead of having a broken-down sign, like stuck out in front of Mike's liquor for, beer 30 for years.
The reason we went to having this yearly automatic renewal is what we found in years past, you know, a use was approved for a 20-year term, guaranteed 20 years from now, probably there'll be different staff, and there have been many times, we've found special use permits that have lapsed, and it's been 10 years, and then you get into a situation where, well, did that property owner get it vested right, because the city didn't do anything with it? So, with this provision, it takes care of that, because that permit is going to continually roll for an additional year, unless the city determines that we want, we want to take another look at this, and then we just simply give the applicant, or the owner 90 days' notice, that we're not going to let this automatically renew for a year, we want you to reapply for the permit. So it kind of prevents that, you know, getting lost.
Are there any other questions for staff or the owner?
Patrick and Mike, you guys probably remember this, I mean, obviously, you've been through this pole sign ordinance at least three times since I was involved previously, but I'm curious as to, do you recall the discussions surrounding when an application would outweigh the negative appearance of DeSoto community at large resulting from proliferation of such signs? Was there some discussion about that? I mean, at what point do you ever make that call?
A lot of the discussion was, it's kind of a first come, first served.
Okay.
And also, the first one is not going to meet that, but where's the line going? And it really, I think we had a conclusion that, yeah, first ones are, first come, first served, and there could be, there could be a point in time in the future, but where that line goes, if we knew it, it'd be in the red.
I guess.
When it looks like, when you drive into a lot, I said.
Well, you know, the, the pincushion exit is in the, I have the beholder, I think, you know? Okay.
I have a question, because the special use permit, and then there's change in ownership, where the property changes to something else, do they have to reapply, or is this just carried straight on 20 years?
I guess it's my understanding, it stays with the business, so if the owners change, but stays the Burger King, it stays there.
It wouldn't even change the type of, it could become a chicken place or something, they could change the graphical display of the sign.
That's right, we can't on First Amendment, just changing the, so it would run with the property, regardless of the business.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Audrey, you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
There's no other questions, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Would, you guys like to say something?
Yeah, something about that, like the 90-day notice period.
Just a moment.
Yes, ma'am?
Name and address, please.
Roger Franz, 201 Commerce Street, Suite 600, Fort Worth, Texas 76102. Sorry. The, so, this is a landlord-tenant relationship for the franchisee, you know, operator, and then a different landlord, and the property owner is subject to be a different property owner in the future. We will plan on selling the investment income stream, so the, the notification, if it's going to be read into the ordinance or the special use permit, I would ask that you do something more than 90 days, because a lot of times, it'll go to a mailbox somewhere, it'll sit for a week or two before somebody gets it, it'll go sit on somebody else's desk for a week or two before somebody goes through it, and then by that time, for somebody to investigate it and figure out what's going on, figure out who to get in touch with at the city, or the right ownership, I would, I would suggest, like, more like 180-day notification period, as far as to re-up, or figure out what a strategy is. And then, we ask for special use permits for drive-through properties all over the United States, and it's typical to have a renewal request at, like, the change of, if Burger King went out of business, that special use permit would end with that Burger King, so that it would give the city the opportunity to reevaluate either the drive-through or the sign, or something along those lines. If y'all would be open to something along, along those lines, instead of just making like a strict 20-year term, that it would run with, like, the Burger King, the Burger King brand business, and at such time it went out of business, then it would expire.
But we, that last part, we really can't do that, just based on, there have been recent court cases that say, a city cannot control signs by the message on the sign. So if it changed from Burger King to McDonald's, we essentially would be regulating that pole sign by the text of the sign. I know it sounds pretty funky, but, but that's just what the law is right now. As far as the longer notification period, that's no, I mean, we can change the special use permit, we can change that to 180 days. But, but that, that pole sign would run with.
Okay. Thank you.
Forgive me, I don't know that I have seen the 90-day notice provision.
It's not, I had just, in reviewing the materials, I had sent an email to Brad, Mike recommended that, instead of the 20-year term, there's a specific provision that we use, and I'll include that in the ordinance for the city council.
And your memo wasn't part of the materials, was it?
No, he didn't have.
Okay, so we didn't know about that. Well, that's, it sounds like a council issue to me.
Anybody else that can come forward? This time we'll close the public hearing. Anybody else have any other questions for staff? Well, as you vote on this, this will go towards, to the city council for their approval. This time, would somebody have taken a motion?
Oh, please. I couldn't go home if I didn't.
Do it.
Yeah, there's a lot of history.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the SUP for Burger King for their pole sign, with the stipulations that Patrick was talking about, after 20 years, a yearly, do you call it a renewal?
Automatic renewal.
Automatic renewal, is that what you called it, Patrick?
Yeah.
Okay. With 180, thank you, with 180-day notice to the store owner?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Chairman, I'd like to read that back, make sure we have it correct. Patrick, could you make sure I have this?
Sure.
Motion by Commissioner McPherson to recommend approval to the city council of the special use permit with a term of 20 years, with an annual automatic renewal, and with a 180-day notice to the franchise.
Now, wait a minute, was that an automatic renewal every year, or after 20 years?
After the 20-year period.
After 20 years.
With a term of 20 years, is this an automatic renewal?
After that time period.
It's automatic renewal. One year renewal.
Yes, yes, one-year renewal.
Okay, that's all working, one-year renewal after the 20 years?
Yes. Automatic one-year renewal after the initial 20-year term.
Well, the approval, wouldn't it? Not just saying automatic renewal, approv'd renewal.
It's going to automatically roll from year to year without any action by anybody, unless the city council jumps in.
Okay, all right.
With a 180-days' notice, to say, we want. Why did you say it in the first place?
Again, sounds like a council issue to me.
Okay, let's try this one more time, get this legally set up. Motion by Commissioner McPherson to recommend approval to the city council of the special use permit with a term of 20 years, with an automatic annual one-year renewal after the initial 20-year term, and with a 180-day notice to the franchise.
With automatic annual one-year renewals, with and, you have the word and in there? Or is it like, it's just one single renewal for one year?
That's what it sounds like. If you put automatic renewal annually after 20 years.
I'm sure it says renewals.
Automatic renewals, renewals, annuals.
My motion and nothing ever.
Yes, you are. Who wants to correct it this time? I'm going to read it one more time.
Right, I'll hold it.
Would you sign my check? I'm listening to you, sorry. Motion by Commissioner McPherson to recommend approval to the city council of the special use permit with a term of 20 years, with an annual automatic.
Think the word and out. Annual, annual, annual automatic.
With annual automatic one-year renewals after the initial 20-year term. And with 180-day notice to the franchise. Thank you all.
Very welcome.
I'll second that. Thank you, Commissioner McPherson.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Manson?
Yes.
Templeton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner, the motion has been.
Okay, the next item on there, under Jim's old business, consider text amendment for updating development procedures. Patrick?
Yes, Commissioner, thanks for allowing me to come before you. I did, I know it's been a while since you last talked about this, I did include in your packet a fairly extensive memo addressing the questions and concerns raised. I'm happy to go through that memo, if you'd like, but if, I mean, I guess, has everybody had an opportunity to read the memo? And do you want me to go through those issues, or do you want to just ask questions about specific areas? I'm open to handling any way you, you want to do that.
What's the commission feel?
Is everybody satisfied with the memo and the answers that are given? Do we agree with them, or does anybody have any questions? Mike, thinking.
Made sense to me, which is kind of scary.
Well, I certainly have no intention of making Patrick go back through his memo, so I appreciate, I appreciate the work, I think he did a great job. I do appreciate that. I did email Patrick after I got that, because there was one issue that I did think was worth talking about, because I think this was reflective of the discussion. We were talking about a concern for a person who buys a home in a subdivision that has a delayed improvement, and if for whatever reason the developer didn't complete the delayed improvement, whether some future owner might be subjected to having to pay for it, I think that's what we were concerned about, or at least the discussion. As Patrick explained it to me, and let you go ahead and explain it, but I think we don't get there, in that a person who's a homeowner and pulls a building permit, wouldn't get an occupancy permit unless the delayed improvements on their lot were in fact constructed. So I think that addresses the issue.
Right. So in the end, generally speaking, probably the only time you're going to have someone down the chain of title, like, someone that bought a lot, who's having to be forced to pay for an improvement the developer never put in, that's very likely going to be someone that bought a lot but never built on it. You know, maybe it's someone that bought three lots as an investment, and they never built on it, and so they would be in a situation where the city could, if the city wanted to, come and say, look, you know, sorry, but here on the final plat, you know, a sidewalk in front of your, these lots, or this lot that you bought, was a delayed improvement, five years have went by, and it never got put in, so we are, we are going to assess your, you can pay it, you know, upfront, what it's going to cost to put that sidewalk in, but if you don't, we're going to assess your property for that. So that scenario could happen, but it, it, and it's similar to the, what we just went through in Oak Country 8, so it's not unlike that, but as Commissioner Templeton mentions, if you have someone that built a house, then it's not ever going to be an issue, because they would never be able to live in the house if, if the delayed improvement was not installed, so.
I mean, one, one thought that I had to maybe make that a little more clear, was under 701(c)(1), we speak of the delayed improvement adjoins, or is part of a lot or parcel that's subject to the city issued building permit, no final certificate of occupancy issued until the delayed improvement is complete and accepted by the city. That I think is the, the part that says that if you build a house on this lot, you got to have the delayed improvement constructed before you get your occupancy permit. My only thought was maybe add to the end of that, so, you know, delayed improvement is complete and accepted by the city as to that lot or parcel, or something that specifies that, the delayed improvement we're talking about is the one that affects that piece of property, as opposed to. about is the one that affects that piece of property as opposed to the delayed improvement generally, which could be the entire subdivision.
Yeah, and that's where I think for purposes of like annexation statute, the, the term adjoins or is part of a lot or parcel, yeah, I think that language is, is clearly indicating that if the delayed improvement, it has to have some connection to that lot. Either adjoining it such as a culvert tube or a sidewalk or a street tree, meaning it abuts that lot, or is part of it, meaning it's on that lot, then, then you won't get a final occupancy permit.
But I could get an occupancy permit if I'm in a subdivision with a delayed improvement of sidewalks, if I built the sidewalk that's on my lot, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if the delayed improvements is all sidewalks in the subdivision, I'm just saying it might be helpful to have specificity that it's the delayed improvement that's actually on that lot. Because the late improvement's obviously gonna join the, it's always gonna be a lot adjoining the delayed improvement because the whole thing's part of the subdivision.
Well, a join though, has a particular meaning of touching that lot.
Okay.
Adjoining, isn't like the sidewalk down the, I mean, a join would mean that it touches that lot in some way.
Okay, well, if it's clear to you.
I feel like it is, but if you wanna, you know, if we want to talk about adding additional language, that's, that's fine too.
I have one question, Patrick. If, say there's a row of houses and somebody bought two or three lots and decided not to develop on them for five years or whatever, and everybody else has got sidewalks except that little strip right here in the center, we have no, we're not ever gonna go ahead and put that in, or we're just gonna sit, what if they decide not to develop on it forever and maybe it goes into a state or a probate or something? So there's a gap that doesn't have a sidewalk there and that's acceptable?
Are you talking about today or after this text amendment goes into force?
After this text amendment goes into.
So by virtue of this text amendment, at that five year mark, the city would have the authority, and I say authority because the city isn't obligated, but, you know, based on the city council or city administrative recommendation, we would then have the authority to put that sidewalk in and assess it to those three lots and the property owner won't, their only recourse out of that scenario is to pay upfront for the cost of those assessments. So after we determine the amount that it would cost to put that sidewalk in, you know, we would, that's what the 60 day, we would give them notice that, look, we're doing this, if you don't pay within the 60 day period, we're gonna assess your property. They could pay up and then there would never be an assessment, but otherwise, they, they wouldn't have any recourse to get, get out of that. And that's, goes back to putting that delayed improvement on the face of the plat, so that language will put any future owners on notice.
That they have, they're required to do.
They're, they may be subject to that.
But in the meantime, we've got a complete subdivision with sidewalks except for a gap of houses, that's why I hate to see, we've got nice sidewalks and somebody doesn't develop that for whatever reason, and we've got a hole in our sidewalks, there's continuous sidewalks there.
Yeah, but you don't want to do construction over top of the sidewalk.
I know, but I just hate to see it sit there forever. I mean, if somebody's gonna go in there and build a house on it within a year's time, that's one thing, but what if it gets tied up and I guess that's just.
That's why in the.
It's one of the confusing points of construction in a subdivision, you get stuff like this happens. It makes no sense to put the sidewalk in because I guarantee you it'll get trashed and ruined and you have to start all over again.
I know.
But, you know, there's so many different things that go along with it also, so.
Yep.
Well, I think we discussed like that Timber Ridge, there's a couple lots that are, because of the steepness, they're just not buildable.
Yeah.
That's why in the Exhibit B, which is the proposed text amendment, I recommended that you set that time period at five years because I think if you keep it at five years, you know, chances are the developer, meaning the, the person who started the development, probably still in the picture and, you know, having assessments on a lot is not good for, you know, puts you at sort of a competitive disadvantage to other builders. So I think if, at five years, your developer may still be in the picture and by simply telling them that, look, we're past five years, we're gonna go ahead and do this, I think that would possibly incentivize that developer to just go ahead and put that sidewalk in so their, those lots aren't burdened with that assessment.
And part of this too is in lieu of having the escrow created, right?
Right.
Because we did have a mechanism that said that if you're gonna defer the, the sidewalks, you had to at least escrow, was it half the cost?
Right.
So we're not gonna require that anymore.
No, and, and generally speaking, escrows are sort of frowned on now in city government because if that, if you hold that money for more than a year, technically you're supposed to pay that person interest on that money that you've held for more than a year. So that just gets, the same thing with mud bonds. We used to have mud bonds that, you know, the city was holding for, couldn't find the owner, so we're, I know, we're trying to get away from, you know, holding other people's monies because it does create other financial issues, so. That's why I think going to this and getting away from individual subdivision agreements, this is just essentially putting property owners on notice of this, so it gives the city the right, but not the obligation to address these. So with no other questions, I would, if you're comfortable with the text amendment that's in Exhibit B, I highlighted the, the two changes from the last time, this was before you, in yellow highlighting, but you can simply make a motion to recommend that the city council adopt the text amendment contained within Exhibit B, as in boy, as written.
Do we have any other questions for Patrick? Roger?
I'd make a motion to recommend approval of the text amendment as described in Exhibit B.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Lainey?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Charles?
Yes.
Yes.
Town one?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, old business item B, discuss text amendment for allowing, allowing foul on less than one acre.
All right, well, we've probably talked about the chickens as just as much as we've talked about delayed improvements, so. But not both sides.
Whole other level.
One thing I do want to point out, I must have basketball on my mind because I've spelled foul F-O-U-L and it's supposed to be F-O-W-L, so I have to thank Lana for pointing that out to me. So if you do see a F-O-U-L, please let me know as far as we get moved. I did correct it on what's been posted on the website, so your, your packet does have some incorrect spellings of foul. Anyway, based upon our discussion, our previous meeting, I guess we, we made it much more clear on how we revoke a permit and some of the things that were brought up as far as odors and noise and maintenance of the coop and some things like that. So I think it's pretty clear as far as my understanding of the discussions we've had over the previous two meetings, so if there's anything else. We still have, I've not advertised for the public hearing, so we'll be back on our agenda at least for one more time, but.
That'll be in February?
That will be the February meeting, correct.
Any questions? Anybody add or subtract or?
I have a question. Royal Payne has a question. This is an application for less than one acre, do they have to have a different application for if they have more than an acre?
Well, our, when the amendment or the amendment was adopted for more than one acre, that wasn't part of the.
Because it specifies on number one.
This is only for, this is only for one acre or less.
Okay.
So we do not have that requirement for anything over an acre, it's just, there are, as far as, it's regulated by the lot size and some things like that, but, so this is just for one, one acre or less. It's really geared towards somebody who lives in town.
So bound on four B, the coop is not maintained in good order, which allows for the foul to range freely.
There's your foul.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one of them.
Within, range freely within their coop, not, because you don't want it to sound like it's a free range, does that sound right to you guys? The coop is.
Saying if the coop isn't so bad that they get out.
I think.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to say is if, if they can get out of the coop, that's part of, that's a reason for revocation.
Okay, I thought you were trying to say that it had to be big enough for them to get around inside of it, it wasn't, they couldn't be on top of each other.
No, so they don't get out.
Okay, my problem.
Run in your yard instead of mine.
Or the dogs either, or something, okay.
It's all right too.
On the application itself, please provide a brief description, maybe and or picture of the enclosure coop to house the foul, including distance from each side and rear of the yard, yard, uh, property line, maybe put including placement of the coop? Make it a little clearer, or is that clear enough to you guys and I'm just being picky?
And we can probably go either way with it. I, I, we just want to make sure that they understand they've got 20 feet from either.
Maybe 20 feet from the front.
Right.
Or from the back.
Yeah, because they gave us a picture and it's over here and that coop gets rotted out and they decide to build a new one over here, technically they're in, in, they've broken the regulations because they did not state it that they had changed it.
Yep.
See what I'm saying? In expressive.
Oh, my other thing was, it's got the name of two responsible people, what if it's a single family, a single parent? Maybe we don't need two people?
Well, I guess you wouldn't need two people.
Sometimes there's just a single parent in there.
Yeah, we could just strike that sort of parentheses area.
And I'd leave two spots for them to name people.
Yeah.
But we don't need to require two people.
Okay, that's all my comments.
In that section one, there is so, uh, sitting back for just 25 feet, is that all the way around property line, front, back, side?
Well, it's, it's, they have to be in the backyard, so it's backyard, 20 feet from the back line or the sides in the rear yard and we have definitions for, in our code already about what defines a rear yard, a corner, corner lots and.
The side and rear property, right?
Correct.
Yeah, if I remember correctly from the last meeting, Lana had a different interpretation of that. There was 25 yards from the property line in the rear yard, you thought that was 25 yards, 25 feet from the back line of the property as opposed to the sides as well.
I believe that's what it's, what it had stated was, it didn't say anything about the side setting, it was just from the back.
I mean, why wouldn't we use the same language if we're doing a text amendment? Let's clean it up so that's clear for both of them.
Well, it's, no, it's different language. What I said, what was before was just in the rear yard. The rear yard is defined as basically from the back corners of the house to the property line, which also includes side yards, so, but we made it clear that it also included side yards and the backyard.
Oh, so there was a change in the language on one?
Yeah, that the 20 feet from the side and rear property line.
That's not in one, that's in two. I mean, I think it should be the same language as.
Okay, there you go.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
You're talking about, okay.
If we're gonna amend it, let's go ahead and make it clear for both of them, it's the same task, right?
Right.
So just amend number one to say 20 feet and the same verbiage for side and backyard.
Yeah, I'd just use the same language for both of them.
Right.
And then the only other nitpicky thing, because I'm good at that, is paragraph four. So there's four conditions there where it can be revoked. Maybe it should just be clear that it, that they're any of those four conditions, so maybe put semicolons at the end of each of those and put an or before the last one.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Got you.
I think any one of those would be enough to say we lost your permit.
Right, yeah, any one of them.
Right. I appreciate you doing it, I, I think, you know, this is, this was a good result.
Yeah.
You kind of hit it like a tar baby last time, so. This is good.
We need to have you bring this back again with the changes?
Well, it will be back because we have the public hearing on it.
Doing the public hearing?
Yeah, so it'll be amended, it'll be changed one more time.
But you need to vote on it tonight then?
I guess I really don't, we're still having a discussion at this point.
All right.
I know, we're gonna have, this one's gonna be around for a while.
We have our public hearing next time when they can have their chickens by spring.
Yep, you're right.
Barbecue.
Just in time for you.
You're bad.
Yeah, that's right, the chicks, they come out usually in the spring, early spring, so.
Well, okay, so can I ask one more question? If you can have 12 chickens on an acre, how come we can only have five chickens on it? Less than an acre.
Well, that's, when we looked at some of the other communities, that was sort of a number that was, came up with, but it was, and some of them regulated by lot size and we just didn't want it, I guess we didn't want to spend the staff time calculating somebody had a.
Five chickens on a .9 acre lot isn't bad, five chickens on a quarter of an acre is a lot of chickens.
Four, five, four, five thousand square foot, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, I rest my case.
Well, we'll look forward to having this.
Yeah, okay.
I won't say anything, I promise. You do it.
We can just, yeah, we, job security, we'll just keep coming back, you know?
Nothing under new business? I just want to remind you on, under general business, A and B will be under consent.
Okay. Okay, I got you, yeah, we talked about that.
Thing that creates an issue maybe is like, Tim wasn't present in the last meeting, so he shouldn't be able to vote on plan and commission previous minutes, but he can vote to approve this decision.
Right.
He was just abstaining, that's why council members shouldn't.
Yeah, but if you're voting on two things at one time, it's, it's a thing of voting on both.
Or we could just leave it the way it is and, it's, it's not like we save a whole lot of time by.
Okay.
Having a separate.
Doesn't make any difference to me, one way or another.
I've always thought the consent agenda thing's kind of silly. I've always thought the consent agenda thing's kind of silly, I'd, I'd just go ahead and leave it like that, but that's me.
For that, I agree.
Okay, works for me.
Half the municipalities and the county have to pull stuff off the consent agenda every time they try one anyhow, so.
Does anybody else have any comments they want to make tonight, anything that needs to be brought up?
I have an announcement.
Okay.
We started our public information campaign for a Parksmore referendum, it's going to vote in March, so we started the social media campaign for that, $3.2 million, go check out the website, check out the information that's out there at Vision Open House, Monday evening in this room. Next Monday would normally be a park board meeting, but we're just gonna send it to open house. So if you're interested in finding out more about that, check out the website or visit the open house. There'll be another open house later in the month, prior to the council, prior to the second council meeting in February, so. The word's out there, so, you know, we're obviously restricted from campaigning for or against the referendum, so our goal is to make sure that.
Voters know what's.
What entails, timeframe for those projects and how that might impact their taxes in the future, so. Kind of a big deal for us, we've not done a, a referendum on this, so it'll be interesting to see really how the vote comes out.
As part of that improvements now at Riverfront Park, is there gonna be any work done on the road going down there? done on the road going down there?
No, we don't have anything in the bond about the road. We talked internally about maybe we could pave the, are you talking about the loop drive?
Well, no, the the road going to Ottawa, Ottawa.
The Ottawa Street, that's on our CIP, it's not part of the bond issue, but it's on our capital improvement plan, reconstruct that road.
Yeah.
From 82nd all the way down to the sidewalks. That's a big one, not for a couple of years.
Mike, I didn't follow it very well, but I did see the announcement. So there's, is there another website that has more detail about it? Because it does seem like, it seemed like the announcement posed a lot of questions for folks that were kind of looking at it about, you know, what is the Kill Creek Trail going to be and?
Yeah, so on our website, the announcement has the link to the website. It is, it is here under Parks and Recreation. There's a subpage called Bond Repr.
Okay.
This is where you'll find.
A little more detail about that? Okay.
I've not seen a question yet that wasn't answered.
Okay.
And it's not a lot, really not a lot of material.
I I didn't really spend much time on it, but I did notice the chatter on it was basically people asking questions because they didn't quite understand what the improvements were.
Yeah, I haven't seen, I haven't seen a Facebook question that isn't the answer.
Okay.
I have a quick thing. I'd like to thank Brad for getting the packets out to us day and a half or day earlier. Appreciate that. Yes, I did. A little extra time could make a difference in, you know, for somebody.
Anybody else have anything? We have a motion. And a second? Hold favorite?
Aye.
We adjourned.
Good to see you guys. Thank you.
I get my email bill.
Yeah, I know, it's been on for a long time. There's no way I can. No, probably not. I figured it was something. Part of this, I understand, I don't understand, but I hear, I go, we can't control what's on the sign. But I find it hard, which being.
And since I can't.
We can't control the sign. Whatever's going on that sign, but if we say that sign can't be there, it has to come down. How do you control it?
No. Yeah, it's not like if Bert King, if Bert King left, then, you know, if he was talking about that, that used permit would die also. Yeah, we can't. Yeah, but if somebody went in there, put up a business that we didn't want and couldn't really stop, we couldn't say, okay, your special use permit is no longer. You too. Take me there. Priscilla's Lawrence, thank those guys. Oh, you speak Priscilla's, yeah. That's what's, that's what generated that case.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you, Bob. Running like a top, I like it.
Tried to keep it short.
I appreciate it.